All right, I think we're going to start this debate for the City Commission of Hays. Just a small note here, a couple of points that I want to make. First of all, thank you all for being here tonight for the Hays City Commission Candidate Forum. I am Jay Steinmetz, Assistant Professor of Political Science at Fort Hays State University. And to my left here is Dr. Wendy Roliter-Sook. She's an Assistant Professor at Fort Hays as well in the Department of Political Science. We will start by introducing all of our candidates, and then they will have two minutes for opening statements. We are accepting questions from the audience in both verbal and written form. There is a couple of people around with some things to write on. You can write the questions down and hand it back to our assistants, and they'll get them to us. Or you can also, they have microphones available, and you can ask a question through the microphone if you so choose. Please raise your hand if you'd like to ask a question, and one of our Student Government Association volunteers will hand over the microphone. And if you'd like to direct us, a specific question to a specific candidate, please refer to them by name, and that candidate will be given the opportunity to speak first. All candidates will be given an opportunity to comment on the issue afterward. Candidates will be given two minutes to answer each question. Wendy here is going to indicate to them when they have 20 seconds left. You'll hear her say 20 seconds, and then they have to wrap up the answer. I will also make note here, please turn your cell phones to silent. That includes the candidates, by the way. Last week, we had one of the candidates' phones go off during the debate, so if you can, turn your cellphone off. And before we begin, I just would like to take a moment to thank our sponsors for the event. The Student Government Association at Fort Hays State University, the Department of Political Science, the Docking Institute, Tiger Media Network, the American Democracy Project, and the Hays Area Chamber of Commish. Thank you very much for supporting us. Now, we're going to bring out the candidates in alphabetical order by last name. Candidate Michael Burgess. Candidate Ryan Reimer. And candidate Henry Schwaller IV. And you may be seated, gentlemen. Okay, so we're going to start with our opening statements, and we'll begin with Michael Burgess.
You have to hold it down.
Okay, am I on? Michael Burgess, I go by Burgess. I'm a financial advisor at Ameriprise Financial. I've been in personal finance for 11 years now. Prior to that, my experience is in hotel management for about 11 years as well in Kansas, Missouri. I came to Hays in 1999 to attend Fort Hays University. I graduated in 2004 with a degree in political science. So my interest in running for City Commission kind of goes back to that route. I've always had a little bit of an interest in governance, especially our local government. I truly believe it's where we get the most impact. As we'll probably discuss tonight, it literally determines the streets that we drive on, and the water we drink, and so forth. So it's been an interest of mine for a while to find myself an opportunity to run for a public position, and so that's where I come from at this time to seek the City Commission position.
Okay, thank you. And now, opening statement from Ron Melick.
Welcome, everyone. I'm glad everyone's here, and those that are watching at home via the media. A little about myself, as I was born and raised in Atwood, Kansas, graduated from Atwood High School, Colby Community College, and attended Fort Hays State University. I've been a resident of Hays since 1973. I've been in the floor-carrying business for 48 years and self-employed for 46. I was elected to the City Commission in 2007 through 2015. I had the privilege of serving as mayor from April 2009 to April 2010, and I was appointed in July of 2018 by the City Commission to serve Commissioner Chris Dinkle's unexpired term. My wife and I marry, have four children, and 12 grandchildren. I'm seeking a seat on the City Commission to help lay the foundation for the city to continue to grow, attract, and recruit new businesses and jobs to the city, well into the next decade. If elected, I will work to ensure that the city continues to operate on a balanced budget, keep the mill levy at 25 mills, and to wisely spend our money on our aging infrastructure, be it streets, sewer, and water. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And now, opening statement from Mason Ruder.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mason Ruder. First, I want to thank everybody who's helped put this on, and thanks to all you who came out, and to those watching at home, you're the reason why we're up here in the first place, so it's nice to see a lot of people involved in their community. So, a little bit about me, I'm proudly born and raised here in a Hays America. I'm a 2010 graduate of Thomas More Prep. I'm currently the Environmental Planning Supervisor for Ellis County. I have a beautiful wife and a beautiful little baby girl. If you hear her crying tonight, it's cries for support. So I chose to run for the City Commission to help push our city forward for smart, efficient, sustainable, and financially responsible growth for the future. The City of Hays is in a great position currently to start looking at the long term for our community. We're at a crucial point in our city's life to start making some decisions on how we adapt and sustain our growth and future with changes in technology and various economic drivers. It is time to come together and really start getting the work done to better prepare the city for the future, for current citizens, young and old alike, and to those we wish to attract to our beautiful city.
Okay, thank you, Mason. And now, opening statement from Ryan Reimer.
Good evening, residents of Hays. I am excited to be here, invited by the Student Government Association to beautiful Beach Smith at lovely Fort Hays State University. I hail from Wichita, Kansas, born and raised, moved here in 1997. Seems when you marry the farmer's daughter, you marry the farm. And she's sitting here this evening, Alicia, my two beautiful children, Garrett and Audrey. Garrett's attending Fort Hays State. I've got considerable experience in the military. I think I'm getting ready to come up on 28 years, which longevity doesn't necessarily mean expertise, just means you've been wise enough to outlast the less sure-footed. I've been an ER nurse for 10 years at Russell Regional Hospital, where I currently serve as the ER manager. Additionally, I've been nurse for almost 20 years now. In the time living here, I've seen a potential for growth for Hays. Scratched my head at some missed opportunities we've had, and have seen things gone from okay to good, and then certainly from bad to worse. I'm here to represent the people of Hays. Not any one person, not any one group. Everybody collectively has an equal voice, and I believe together, with your input, your thoughts, ideas, and leadership, we can certainly make this a great place to live for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And now, opening statement from Henry Schwaller IV.
I want to thank everyone who's here tonight. I appreciate your interest in city government. This means a lot to all of us. Also want to thank the sponsors for putting on this event. I was born and raised here in Hays, attended Hays High School, also attended Fort Hays, graduated from the University of Kansas, left Hays for about 12 years, and lived in Lawrence, Topeka, Dallas, and Philadelphia, moved back to run the family business, and I also teach management and entrepreneurship here at Fort Hays. When I was first elected to the Commission, I attended a budget hearing in June and had a very unpleasant surprise. We spent an hour discussing whether or not we could afford to borrow money for a photocopier. We didn't have $10,000 to buy a copy machine. We didn't have money to buy lawn mowers for the Parks Department. We knew that all of our streets were shot, we had no money to fix them. And this didn't get any better, and I knew that there had to be a better way. So over time, with new management, new approach, we cut spending, we became more efficient in how we did things. The voters approved a half-cent sales tax to fund the general operations of the city. Today, we have $62 million in the bank. We pay cash for everything, we don't borrow money. One of the other fun things I learned at that first budget meeting was we had so much debt that if we continued to borrow at that rate, that the interest payments alone would eat up a quarter of our annual budget. We've set the city on the right direction, but as all the other candidates pointed out, there's something we have to do that's different. We have to think about how to position this city so that we can go forward. We are the only growing community in northwest Kansas. How do we keep that going? And that's what we're going to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Henry. And now, let's go to some questions from the audience here. The first question is directed at our non-incumbents, Mason Ruder, Michael Burgess, and Ryan Reimer. This questioner wants a straight-up yes or no answer. How would you have voted on the issue of roundabouts? How would you have voted on the issue of the purchase of real estate? I assume that means eminent domain. And unless the questioner wants to clarify what they meant by purchase of real estate. And the third question, how would you have voted on supplying utilities north of I-70 along 230th Street? Yes or no answers. And let's begin with Michael Burgess. Well, that's what they ask.
On a strictly yes or no, if that's what it is, on the roundabout, as of the current design, I would vote no. On the purchase of real estate, I'm not sure if it's concerning any real estate, or if it's concerning 27th and Commerce. I would have voted no on that purchase. Supplying utilities, I would probably vote yes on that.
And for all the candidates, if you can speak a little bit closer to the microphone, Tiger Media Network's having a hard time picking you up. Okay, and the same question here for Mason Ruder.
Okay, on, I guess, a strictly yes or no basis as well, the roundabouts in their current design, no. On the purchase of real estate, if it's the right-of-way acquisition you're talking about for the roundabouts, or the land acquisition, it would be a no. And for the utilities for the 230th project, I would vote yes.
Okay, thank you. And the same question for Ryan Reimer.
Good thing about being on the end, I don't have to be terribly original. What they said, no, no, and yes.
Okay, no, no, and yes for all three. And for the incumbents, any words that you would like to say with regards to the question?
No on the roundabouts. I don't know about the land. I'd need to know more to answer that question. No on the utilities. Unless you have a customer for water and sewer, it would be very expensive to deliver utilities to that street, and you'd also have to deal with the water district that's currently serving them. So I'd need to know more, but I would vote no, unless there was an employer or something there.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, for a second question here, we'll begin with Ron Melick in answering this question. How do you plan on engaging voices usually not heard?
I've done that for years. Every day, I go into somebody's house to work, and believe me, people are more honest with you when you're in their home than you are even like here tonight. I never tell them who I am, but I ask them what their feelings are about Hays, what we need to change, what they do like that we are doing currently, and generally just what their ideas are on how Hays is operating efficiently. So I've done that for 46 years in our community, so I feel like I have a very good pulse of what the silent majority is saying. These are not the people that are going to be ranting and raving, but these are common everyday folks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And the same question now for Mason Ruder. How do you plan on engaging voices usually not heard?
The one thing that I want to really stress is I'm open to anybody. If I see you in Dylan's or Walmart, out on the street, come up and talk to me. I love talking to people. My job right now is talking to people. I don't want to be dismissive. I'm not dismissive to anybody who has an issue. Especially as a City Commissioner, the whole job is to listen to the people in the first place. I want as many people as possible to come talk to me. If you want to call me even, let me know. You can message me on Facebook. However you want to reach me, I'll give you my phone number if you want. You can call at any hour, I guess as long as I'm not sleeping or something. But I would talk to anybody about any issue, and I'll give you the answer as best I possibly can, and if I don't know it, I will go out and find it for you and get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. And now, the same question for Ryan Reimer. How do you plan on engaging voices usually not heard? And just a reminder, stay a little close to the microphone so your voices, we can hear you.
Thank you for the reminder. Never generally had much problem with voice projections, my kids may tell you. I stay engaged with the people of other communities on a daily basis, being an ER nurse, and I hear the concerns of many marginalized persons. I would like to assure everyone in this room, regardless of your economic status, where you may live, I identify with you. I've not always lived in such fine accommodations as I do currently, and I identify with each and every one of you and all the struggles you may go through on a daily basis. I've been there, and I'm here to help, and I'm very approachable. If you see me in public, feel free to come up. Like Mason said, send me a textbook message, send me any kind of contact you like, I will be in contact with you. Give me a phone call, carry your pigeon, smoke signals, I'll come to your house. We can talk things over, maybe go out and grab a cup of coffee. Other ideas I've had is sit down, having chats, scheduled group chats with people in a public place, coffee shop, something like that, where we can all get to know each other a little bit better and hear your concerns off the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, the same question for Henry Schwaller IV. How do you plan on engaging voices usually not heard?
As I have, but probably a little bit more face-to-face. I'm very fortunate in my work that I get to travel all over the town during the day, post office, grocery stores, hardware stores, Home Depot. I get to see a lot of people of every economic status, and also teaching here. I get to hear the concerns of students who are a customer of ours as well as faculty. And it's through that that I get information that things need to be fixed. I get a lot of emails about that. And I also participate in things like the Loveable City. It was a month ago, and I got to sit with six ordinary folks and hear what they thought could be fixed or needed to be fixed in Hays. I was at an event about a month ago, and everyone had a story about something that I fixed for them. The streetlight that was out, the alley that needed graded. And I didn't remember doing that, but it's that contact with everyone that I see that I appreciate. I love talking to people in Dylan's, and I will continue to do that.
Okay, thank you. And now, lastly, the same question for Michael Burgess. How do you plan on engaging voices usually not heard?
As I announced my run for City Commissioner, one of the most important things for me was to be very proactive in my approach. And so, I've been out, if you've gotten one of my little cards, or I didn't bring one with me. If you've gotten one of those or seen one on your doorstep, I've knocked on over 3,000 doors already, and I didn't do it by getting a voter registration list and those things. I literally went street by street and didn't miss a single door. I didn't look up who's where, what, and made sure anybody that came to the door had the opportunity to discuss with me. And I felt it was important to try, and I will continue to be out knocking on doors for the next two weeks. And my approach is to be that kind of person that I'm not going to shy away or try to look up who's where and make sure I get in front of the most important people, it's to make sure I'm in front of everybody. I've also tried to be proactive in getting in front of, I've been invited to the senior center during this process, and made sure I went to speak to that group, invited to the coffee shop, let them poke and prod me. I went to DSMWK and made sure I talked to Jerry Michaud and got an understanding of that organization and their needs and goals. I am the treasurer of the ARC of Central Plains. That is an organization for Special Olympics and for the disabled.
20 seconds.
And so, these are organizations that I've been a part of prior, but have been very proactive, and I would continue to look to be proactive in reaching out to those as serving as a City Commissioner.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, for another question here from the audience. What do you see as the biggest problem facing Hays? Why is this a problem, and how can we fix it? We're going to begin with Mason Ruder.
The biggest issue that I see growing up in Hays is we have such a fantastic university right here, and we have a lot of young people that don't usually stay. It's very sad to see that we have these great minds that go through the university. They have a bunch of skills that we can utilize right here. We have the space available, and they take jobs or opportunities elsewhere. So our biggest issue that we need to tackle is finding out some ways to retain these young people. Affordable housing comes to mind, moderately priced housing. Have we worked with developers, real estate agents, Grow Hays? We have a bunch of resources available to us to bring in some of these potentially new developments, to let the students and the younger people plant roots right here in town. I know I struggled to find a home in my price range. I got lucky with what I found, but I know it was a difficult, difficult process that could have scared me away, but I love this place so much, I needed to find a place to live. And then, the other thing is with the businesses, our local businesses. 90% of our local economy growth is through local businesses. Only 10% comes from the outside, retail. So if we can help sustain these businesses that are here in town, that can retain the younger people, or encourage entrepreneurship with them, we can come up with a lot of different ways to retain these young people and help support our economy.
Okay, thank you. And now, the same question for Ryan Reimer. What do you see as the biggest problem facing Hays? Why is this a problem, and how can we fix it?
Similarly, rural population decline is a huge thing. Much of northwest Kansas is an aging population. As Mr. Ruder said, we have younger people moving off to more attractive places. And as we look at those other places in Kansas, I mean, Kansas as a whole has a declining population. I think I saw about a 2% growth rate statewide. Those areas happen to be Wichita and Kansas City that are experiencing actual growth. But finding, as he said, ways to make housing more economically affordable. In a search I did of homes, I looked at middle-income housing, which to me was about $200,000 on down to about $150 for entry-level folks, and I only found two that had been made in the last 20 years. If we're to remain competitive and attractive for young people to, A, move to, and B, when they get done with college here, to not want to leave, I mean, we've got a beautiful campus, our main street's blossoming, our parks with the addition of the ARC Park will be amazing. So we've got to do other things to help accommodate and remain attractive and competitive with other towns of similar size in Kansas.
Okay, thank you. And now, the same question for Henry Schwaller IV. What do you see as the biggest problem facing Hays? Why is this a problem? How can we fix it?
The external factors that the other two have mentioned, population loss, as well as commodity markets, as well as our reliance on foreign trade, whether we can affect that or not, not only affect the surrounding counties, but Hays. Fort Hays is very reliant on China. All the new buildings were built with money from our Chinese students. They're very important to us. How are we going to maintain that relationship in this difficult time? That said, if we're going to continue to grow and stay here, we're going to have to invest in the fundamentals. We're going to have to not only retain and grow existing businesses and encourage startups, we're going to have to build houses for the people that work here. We're going to have to make sure that we're creating jobs that are high-skill and high-wage, and not only employ Fort Hays graduates, who are probably the best in the state, particularly in physics and biology and management and sciences and technical education, but what about NC Tech, North Kansas Technical College, has amazing people that could find jobs and fit in right in our economy, and that is a spot that we're missing.
Okay, thank you. And now, the same question for Michael Burgess. What do you see as the biggest problem facing Hays? Why is this a problem? How can we fix it?
I think, I guess, the biggest problem, I'd probably turn it around and say, where's the biggest opportunity? I think Hays has done very well for itself, and in our community, living here provides us so many opportunities, no matter where you are in your stage in life. And so, I think the great opportunity, though, is probably comes down to wage, we have kind of a wage stagnation where salaries or your base income, there's very little opportunity for growth in your wages, which comes down as a greater problem in affordable housing and affordable living. If you're spending, and I think this is a good 80% of our community, if you're spending 30% or more of your wage on housing, whether that's rent or your mortgage, that is not affordable housing. And it doesn't matter what your actual wage is. If you make $20,000 minimum kind of minimum wage work, if you're spending 20 or 30% of your income on rent, or if you make $200,000 but your mortgage is still 30% of what you make, that's not affordable. And that comes, for many of us, as we try to raise our families, it is not unusual to also be spending 20 to 30% of your wage on daycare. So many of my peers are probably in this same boat of spending over half their money on two things, on their housing and on their daycare.
20 seconds.
And providing for their children. So that's probably the biggest opportunity, is trying to figure out how to elevate everybody's standard of living. How to solve it, since I don't have much time, but Grow Hays has a 2020 operation plan. I think we lean on organizations like this that are going to help us attract.
Thank you.
High-position jobs.
Okay, thank you. And now, finally, same question for Ron Melick. What do you see as the biggest problem facing Hays? Why is this a problem? How can we fix it?
I believe our biggest problem is of all of western Kansas. We're no longer an island. It's not us versus them. We depend on people from Colby, Goodland, Quinter, Oakley, Plainville, Stockton. We need them. They're slowly passing away. They're moving out. How are we going to solve this? That is a very difficult question. I don't think the economists can give you a clear answer. I do believe that affordable housing would be great, that would help solve and be able to keep a lot of our people in our community, and also as well as western Kansas. But land prices here in Hays are so high, you can't have affordable housing, because affordable housing starts with affordable land prices. We have many areas that we would like to develop, but to get those land prices down so that we can put in affordable housing is going to be very, very difficult. So we are slowly attracting people from western Kansas, but the depopulation because of western Kansas is hurting our economy in the fact that they rely on us for services, and we rely on them to come.
20 seconds.
And shop here. So we have our... So we have our uphill battle to fight that depopulation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now for another question from the audience. According to multiple studies, roundabouts have been proven to be safer and more efficient, in addition to not having to worry about left-hand turns. Do you support the roundabout programs starting in Hays? Follow-up, how do you persuade Hays residents that roundabouts are beneficial? And we will begin with Ryan Reimer on this one.
I've traveled throughout the world during my service in the military. I've seen practical applications for roundabouts everywhere I've been. Traditionally, at a convergence of roads. In Paris, at the Arc de Triomphe, I think there's about 12 roads that converge into one place. In Junction City, just down I-70 from us, there's about six roads that converge on a significant roundabout right off of I-70. I think an appropriate use of roundabouts in our setting would be for a traffic calming measure. Say in the instance of perhaps 27th, instead of having that four-way stop there, put in a roundabout, that would be fine. In the design of the roundabouts that we have as present, they were intended to fix one problem, and that was to reduce traffic accidents, per the study. As Mr. Melick stated in his bio on Hays Daily News, the 32nd and 33rd Street convergence is a very problematic place. Whether that would be a good place for a roundabout, I still don't think so. Because if you look, if you're approaching from the south and coming all the way around and trying to hang a left on 32nd, you have to travel from the 6 o'clock position, the 9 o'clock position, and hopefully you're in the right lane. Once we've gotten used to the, I'm sure most people will do fine, but we also have to remember that we are a regional hub. Working in Russell, I've already heard people tell me that they really don't wish to come here to navigate our roundabouts, particularly Five within a half of a mile.
Twenty seconds.
So we're going to lose their business, and to me, it's a waste of money.
And Mr. Melick, you were mentioned in that. Would you like to respond?
You have one minute.
You have one minute.
Yes, I would. Roundabouts are calming, but our problem is our North Vine corridor is 60 years old. It wasn't built to accommodate the traffic that we have. Yes, the north-south traffic flows well, but you can't get on and you can't get off of Vine Street because of those intersections. I've been to third-world countries. I was in Haiti, and those people are very poor and very uneducated. But you know, they've figured out how to use a roundabout, and I think the same thing is here.
Twenty seconds.
We will be able to, everybody will be able to negotiate those roundabouts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And let's continue with the, going down the line. Question now for Henry Schwaller IV, same question. According to multiple studies, roundabouts have been proven to be safer and more efficient. Do you support the roundabout program starting in Hays? How do you persuade Hays residents that they are beneficial?
Well, I don't, I don't attempt to persuade anybody that something's going to work for them. That's up to them to determine. That's not the job. We're not cheerleaders. We're here to solve problems. And in fact, one of the things, I've been going door-to-door as well, although not as many homes, it's 50/50, and usually he's for and she's against it. And those are some difficult discussions. I provoke more marital disputes by bringing up roundabouts than any other thing. The truth of the matter is, we do have a street road that was configured incorrectly to begin with. The 32nd, 33rd intersection was always wrong. The 45th intersection, the way 45th connects to Vine Street is wrong. I'm against the configuration as presented, but I do think, I know that we have to fix those two intersections, because if we don't, not only are businesses impaired, but the people that drive them, it's unsafe.
Okay, thank you. And now the same question for Michael Burgess. According to multiple studies, roundabouts have been proven to be safer and more efficient. Do you support the roundabout program starting in Hays? And how do you persuade Hays residents that they are beneficial?
My first assumption is if multiple studies have shown that they're, they ease traffic and they're beneficial, that the city commission has looked at those kinds of studies, and the engineers have used those studies to prove that this is a worthwhile project. I don't know, I disagree on where we are currently with the design of the roundabouts. I do believe that if you look between 32nd and 43rd, if you just think about it as a resident, traveling through those 10 blocks, how confusing the rules of the road are depending on where you are in those 10 blocks. If you're on 32nd and 33rd, there's a quick stop light there. People run it all the time because they're sitting at 32nd and they're looking at the 33rd light, and that turns green because the people coming off of 32nd are supposed to be turning. People run it. If you're on 32nd, you're supposed to courtesy leave a gap for the fronted street, but if you're not from Hays, you don't leave a gap. People honk at you and call you an idiot. So you get through that, you have fronted streets on either side. If people want to, they'll skip across four lanes of traffic to get across. They can turn left, and again, skipping a couple lanes of traffic. You get backed up at 41st light trying to get off Interstate. Again, people leave a courteous, courtesy gap there, and people look at that and say, I'm going to skip through the traffic and try to get through the gap, and that's where we see accidents all the time. You get through by the overpass, there's another stoplight, and you see it all the time. Semis are wanting to turn left and get up on Interstate, but the traffic coming on Vine, they can't quite judge it, so
Twenty seconds.
They start nosing out. And before you know it, that light's red, the semi's halfway up, trying to get off the off-ramp, and people are backed up again. So you look at those 10 blocks, and there, it just doesn't make sense, depending on where you are, if you're on north side or south side, traveling, what the rules of the road are.
Thank you.
For our future, we need to know and make that more consistent.
Okay, thank you. And now finally, same question for Ron Melick. According to multiple studies, roundabouts have been proven to be safer and more efficient. Do you support the roundabout program starting in Hays? And how do you persuade Hays residents that they are beneficial?
Yes, I do support the roundabouts in Hays. In the villages in Florida, they have 180,000 people that live there, and they're all over 65 years old. And they have had a tremendous, I think it's a 60% drop in accidents. I, along with Michael, say that there are so many rules of the road, so many bottlenecks, that we've got to do something. 32nd, 33rd was addressed 20 years ago, and it wasn't fixed at that time. We would have had a much easier time fixing it. But we are not solving any of the problems further north. Like I said before, people can't get on, they can't get off. People are avoiding those directions and clugging, those intersections, consequently in going clear around and either plugging up 27th and Hall or 27th and Vine, just to avoid North Vine. We have, people say that people out west can't learn to negotiate these, but we have farmers out there running $500,000 combines, and I'm sure that they will be able to learn to negotiate our roundabouts. And as a small joke, I tell people that, we have a lot of people in Hays that don't stop at stop signs.
Twenty seconds.
And that a roundabout will be natural for them, because when they come to a stop sign, they slow down and look. Now they can slow down and continue right on through their roundabout. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mason Ruder, same question. According to multiple studies, roundabouts have been proven to be safer and more efficient. Do you support the roundabout program starting in Hays? And how do you persuade Hays residents that they are beneficial?
I'm not against the idea of roundabouts in general. I've driven on quite a few of them. There's nothing to them that's, I guess, they are proven to be safer in circumstances like this. The only thing that I had an issue with was, the reason we're doing this in the first place was because it was poorly designed. Have we for sure looked at every single option available to us? And is this going to be the option that's going to last us in the long run, throughout the entirety of life of the city, for the foreseeable future at least? I appreciate the city looking at these dangerous intersections. I know, especially when I come off the access road right where the old Ramada used to be, my wife's hugging her seat because crossing those lanes is dangerous, especially with the traffic coming off I-70, they're in a hurry to get wherever they need to go. And I think having a roundabout is a good thing for some of these instances, but I just want to make sure before it is done, that it is the only option available to us for the city.
Okay, thank you very much. And now let's move on to a different question. We'll begin with Henry Schwaller IV. How can you continue to foster a good relationship between the city and the county?
We're fortunate that we have a good relationship between the city and the county. It first started with law enforcement. We co-share the law enforcement center. We run dispatch, they run the jail. We run together on calls with EMS. We also do joint planning exercises. They loan us equipment for grading and have been great help in developing the sports complex. There's many more opportunities for us to work together, and it requires us to sit down and just meet. The county is working on a proposal to build a new corridor, the Northwest Corridor. We've helped them, written letters of support. We've joined them as people have come to tour that road, and we'll continue to help them in any way possible. The truth is that they're working on issues that are really important to them right now, and that's getting a hold of their budget and figuring out new revenue sources for the future. And the commission will help them in any way possible on that. But because they're focused on that, it'd be difficult for us to say, hey, why don't we work on this together? Because they have things that they need to get done in the next six to eight months. They are going to have a good leader in their interim county administrator, but if any county commissioners want to get together with us, we'd be very happy to meet with them at any time.
Okay, thank you. And now the same question for Michael Burgess. How can you continue to foster a good relationship between the city and the county?
Seems like fairly straightforward. It's, it kind of goes back to engaging the voices that aren't heard, not that the county commissioners aren't heard, or the county employees aren't heard, but it's just, you know, having that relationship and being open to being able to discuss different issues. If the county needs to bring those towards the city, I, again, how Schwaller basically has already kind of told is, they kind of have their, they got to get their budget in line, but that's not, once they kind of get that in order, I think there is opportunities to foster some growth in the county and the city. I think, I know Ellis residents, Victoria residents aren't going to want to hear this, hopefully they're not watching, but as Hays goes, Ellis County goes. And so it is important that we work with our county commissioners and county employees from the city level.
Thank you. And now the same question for Ron Melick. How can you continue to foster a good relationship between the city and the county?
Well, it's a little tough to follow Henry on that one, because he has pretty well named everything that we have worked with the county on, except that we do also work on the county with, we have mutual fire agreements, so that if we have a large fire in Hays, they will bring their tankers and their firefighters to help us. We also are helping train their firefighters on how to do structure fires with our new training facility in South Hays. We also, in the past, they have helped the city figure out how to lay down a smooth coat of asphalt, cold mix. We have worked with them on, just recently, on a project on 27th Street, on West 27th Street, on resurfacing, and also putting in new culverts. We, as commissioners, every time I see one of the county commissioners, I be sure and visit with them. They've called me, we've called them. So we have an open dialogue, so I don't know that we can do much more than be able to keep those lines of communication open and help them when we have the possibilities for, because I know that they will help us also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And same question for Mason Ruder. How can you continue to foster a good relationship between the city and the county?
The best way I see, especially as a county employee, is the communication. Between the city and Hays is pretty fantastic. I know I'm on the phone almost daily with Curtis in our planning department, Jesse, the Public Works Department Director, Jeff Crispin. I mean, we work with the city people on a bunch of projects. We are currently working on redesigning the extraterritorial jurisdiction around Hays to better suit both the county and city needs. We have a lot of big plans together as both city and county, because like Michael said, what's good for Hays is good for the county. I don't know how much more we can do besides continuing to communicate with each other, because that's how things get done, is communication. Open communication between both entities. If we have to have a joint commission meeting to decide on large projects, it's great to get all these people, especially the elected officials, together to fix these issues that we may have and work together. As Henry mentioned, with the Northwest Business Corridor, the city did offer support. We're in such a great financial situation with them, can we maybe provide some financial support to the project? I mean, it's going to be a good thing for the city in the long run, so why not put a little more towards that and our infrastructure up in that area? Thank you.
Great, thank you. And the same question now for Ryan Reimer. How can you continue to foster a good relationship between the city and the county?
My job as an ER nurse, I deal with county and city employees every day, law enforcement, jail, fire, EMS, and same would be true here in Ellis County. Hays is just about one city. Considerably more people, of course, but we are just one city in our county. And we owe it to other citizens of the county to be able to assist and augment in any way possible. Facilitating those endeavors through joint sessions, looking at what resources and what trainings we can share, that'd be fantastic. And then, of course, keeping open lines of communication, even in between times where we may or may not have a joint session with other entities, to ensure that, hey, yeah, we're helping you out as best we can, and, because we're all in this together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now let's move on to another question. We're going to begin this question with Michael Burgess. In rural development, there's often discussion about what comes first, affordable housing or livable wage jobs, a sort of chicken and egg problem. Which issue, affordable housing or livable wage jobs, do you think local government should emphasize and focus on?
I think the emphasis that the city can do and have the greater impact would be on affordable housing. You really can't go into an employer and force them to raise wages. And it's, while you can look for opportunities for employers to come, that takes many years, and where they are with wages is, again, kind of determined by that employer. So I think the ability to tackle affordable housing can be done sooner from a city standpoint. Now, affordable housing, again, I, we talked about that earlier, about the biggest opportunity, and I thought it was in affordable housing, but it kind of depends, again, how do we tackle it? There's kind of three different areas when it comes to affordable housing. Is it affordable rentals? Is it affordable construction? And first-time home buyers, or home buyers that are wanting to step up from where they currently are in their home to a larger home? And then there's kind of a third entity, which is our baby boomers and retirees that are actually wanting to downsize. And how you tackle those three different areas of affordable housing are different ways. So I think the city can look at RHIDs for construction. If we need, you know, single-family homes on slats, do we need duplexes?
Twenty seconds.
Rental, there is a rental project I'm in support of from Overland Park Group. Um, rental, there is a rental project, um, I'm in support of from Overland Park Group, um, to retrofit Washington School for sixty-three apartments, I believe. Um, so those are the areas I think the city can look and, and make a quicker and a more immediate impact.
Thank you. And now the same question for Ron Melick. Uh, rural development, there's often a kind of tension between what should we focus on first, affordable housing or livable wage jobs? Which issue, affordable housing or livable wage jobs, do you think local government should emphasize and focus on?
I think of, I think, uh, living wages is probably, uh, the easier thing for the city to tackle. Um, we are now looking at, we've got retail strategists looking to bring in not only retail businesses to Hayes, but also other high-paying jobs. We have Grow Hayes and DHDC that are also looking to bring jobs into Hayes. And they are both looking at bringing, at trying to bring in high-tech jobs, high-paying jobs, to attract businesses that do pay higher wages. We have Fort Hay State with the entrepreneurship. Uh, I believe they're going to be able to help us attract, uh, companies that, uh, pay a higher living wage. So I believe higher living wage would be an easier, um, thing for the city to help attract.
Okay, I'm sorry. And thank you. And, um, same question here now for Mason Ruder. Uh, in rural development, uh, a discussion between what comes first, affordable housing or livable wage jobs? Which of these issues, affordable housing or livable wage jobs, do you think local government should emphasize and focus on?
I think the first thing we should focus on is affordable housing. Um, we can talk about raising wages all the live long day, but when we don't have the workforce here to supply the jobs, it's gonna fall off. Um, we need the housing to support the workforce. So the best way we can do that is work with these groups, Grow Hayes and all of, but all these other fantastic groups to work, um, to find development for these, for these houses. Cause we can't do anything to force companies to raise their wages. Um, I would never want to do that. That is up to the business owner and the employee to work together on how they want to be paid and the benefits available to them. But if we can supply affordable housing to these people, it might help drive some of the workforce to be able to work with some of the wages now and help foster growth in new businesses and potentially drive, uh, competition between them to drive up wages. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now the same question for Ryan Reimer. Uh, in rural development, a discussion of what comes first, affordable housing or livable wages? Which issue, affordable housing or livable wage jobs, do you think local government should emphasize and focus on?
Really, it's a two-pronged attack. Um, in one of my favorite movies, Field of Dreams, they kept on wearing whispers out in the cornfield. If you build it, they will come. To me, in our instance, I think that interprets best to the housing. Realtors, um, have done really well, uh, talking to folks in the area. I'm seeing a lot of reasonably middle-priced homes, older homes that have been flipped. Um, however, people coming from outside communities, again, where there's a better availability of newer and more affordable housing and also where they have a higher income level, we need to adjust that playing field, but I, I do think it comes down to more affordable, newer housing first. Um, and again, that comes down to working with realtors, landowners, and, um, and helping get the, get the initiatives where they need to be put to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. And now the same question for Henry Schwaller IV. Rural development, a discussion about what comes first, affordable housing or livable wage jobs? Which issue, affordable housing or livable wage jobs, do you think local government should emphasize and focus on?
Both. They work hand in hand. Secondly, local government can't do it alone. We may have sixty million dollars in the bank, thirty-three million is slotted for water, and then there's rainy day fund. We have to work not only with our local entities, Grow Hayes, but Kansas Department of Commerce, the state of Kansas. The, the, the reason I say both is not because I'm a politician, because we have two big problems. If you ask Hess what their biggest problem is, other than the road, it's that they need a hundred employees now. And it's not housing, they can't get them. If you ask size-wise, why are you moving some of your operations out of Ellis County? We can't get employees. And not just in the assembly line, they need marketing people, they need operations people, and they need finance people. So it's a, it's a problem, we don't have enough people to fill jobs. And then when you ask the university, what is your biggest problem in attracting people to come here? That's when you hear it's housing. And the university just completed an extensive housing study earlier this year, and I know that we'll see the results of that soon. So until unless we not only work with our local partners, but our statewide partners, we are not going to get out of this rut. We didn't get into it easily, it's gonna take time to get out. But if, again, if we work with entities, state, federal government, and our local entities, we can grow out of this situation.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, here we're gonna begin with another question here. Ron Melick is gonna start us off. Uh, currently, the city supports Safe Ride through diversions, meaning the more effective the service, the less money the service gets. How can the city better support Safe Ride?
We're, you know, we can subsidize that, but we have to be careful because we don't want to interfere with, uh, private enterprise. We have Uber, we have Lyft, we have taxis. Uh, we, being able to, if we start subsidizing Safe Ride even more, I, we're gonna have private sector people that are, are gonna be out of, out of jobs. So finding a balance on that is, uh, something that we would have to sit down, uh, with all the parties and, uh, see what kind of, uh, balance we could find, uh, amongst all of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the same question here for Mason Ruder. Uh, currently, the city supports Safe Ride through diversions, meaning that the more effective the service, the less money the service gets. How can the city better support Safe Ride?
Uh, kinda mirroring what Ron said, I, it, it's something we can subsidize, um, but like he said, I don't want to get too, uh, too far into any private entities. Um, I know DSNWK, uh, and Safe Ride offer fantastic service to the citizens at no charge, but it isn't the only available option for people. Like he had said, we, it'd be something we can discuss, um, but I wouldn't want to offer any, uh, answers without having the discussions with all the entities involved first.
Okay, thank you. And the same question for Ryan Reimer. Currently, the city supports Safe Ride through diversions, meaning that the more effective the service, the less money the service gets. How can the city better support Safe Ride?
Safe Ride and other public transport are things that are greatly needed to continue in Hayes. Nobody wants to be out there on the road wondering if they're gonna get in contact with a drunk driver on the road. And we all certainly want to make sure our kids and loved ones get home safe each and every day. That being said, the one thing that I've become greatly familiar with in my tenure as an Army officer is you have to be careful about setting precedent. If you grant one favor or establish a set of rules, it should apply evenly and uniformly to everybody across the board. That's not to say that's an impossibility, but it's something wouldn't have to be looked at and evaluated on a basis to make sure that everybody's fair and the playing field is level.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, the same question for Henry Schwaller IV. Currently, the city supports Safe Ride through diversions, meaning that the more effective the service, the less money the service gets. How can the city better support Safe Ride?
Appreciate the university establishing the Safe Ride program, working with us. Since that time, again, we do have ride sharing. Uh, the ride sharing, uh, people were quite busy over Oktoberfest weekend. They took a lot of people off the road that otherwise would have driven home, and we appreciate that. There's one technical thing, though, that's missing in the question, and that is the access van. And the access van service operates, this Safe Ride, is funded by the city through the alcohol tax. So if any additional funds were to be needed for this, I presume we would fund it through the alcohol tax. So I don't see a problem.
Okay, thank you. And, um, uh, let's move on to, or, uh, Michael Burgess, you got a, an opportunity to answer that one? Sorry about that.
I don't know much about that.
Last question, uh, uh, last answer here for Michael Burgess. Currently, the city supports Safe Ride through diversions, meaning that the more effective the service, the less money the service gets. How can the city better support Safe Ride?
Um, you know, I guess I could just say, I, I don't really know. It's probably the first time I've kinda heard this question, but, um, that's, that was kinda my understanding, and I'm glad, um, Henry Schwaller got to answer it before I did, because that was my understanding, is that I don't see that being a problem, the more effective it is, that less funding is served through the alcohol tax, it's part of the access van through DSNWK. DSNWK gets, uh, half a, half a one percent support through the care council, I believe. And so DSNWK has their funding through state and federal level to fund the access van, um, which then trickles down to, um, Safe Ride. So I, I, kinda reiterating, I, I don't really know. It seems like it's fair, judged by the question, how, how it's currently funded.
Okay, thank you. And, um, now let's move on to, uh, another question here, and our first, uh, respondent will be Mason Ruder. Um, Hayes, downtown Hayes has gone through revitalization over, um, the past several years. What specifically can the city commission do to continue to support downtown revitalization of Hayes?
The great thing about downtown Hayes is it's, it's such a great place to find, um, some really unique, uh, businesses that are unique specifically to the city of Hayes. And a lot of that's done through the downtown Hayes Revitalization Project, um, with the Downtown Development Corporation, um, and through the entities that have worked really hard on that project. Another thing that's been great is a lot of these businesses recently have been able to purchase their own, their building. We can continue to help drive them by, maybe there's some, uh, projects and product incentives, uh, to help restore some of these old buildings. If there's some new business that may need help, we can help direct them to Grow Hayes and some other opportunities for, uh, investors in the town. Uh, we have all these resources, they can come to us for some, for some guidance, and maybe we can look at some more opportunities to help develop these areas along downtown Hayes.
Okay, thank you. And now the same question for Ryan Reimer. What specifically can the city commission do to continue to support downtown revitalization in Hayes?
Our downtown is developing and blossoming. Uh, since the time I've moved here, it has gone from just old storefronts and apartment stores to a lively entertainment, arts, and restaurant section of our town. A lot of money was put into it by developers. And we need to keep the process moving forward with that downtown section continuing to develop, to continuing to revitalize, restoring old buildings. And we can certainly look at options, uh, rebate programs, incentivizations, um, any kind of thing that may help make it easier for them to renovate those buildings, turn them into vital places, because our core is downtown. And in order for us to stay strong, we need a vital core.
Okay, thank you. And the same question now for Henry Schwaller IV. What specifically can the city commission do to continue to support downtown revitalization in Hayes?
Continue to work with our partner, the Downtown Hayes Development Corporation. They do an excellent job of programming and boosting and cheerleading, something that the commission, really, we're not very good at that. Continue to invest in the neighborhood revitalization program. We started that in the early two thousands. Um, I believe if you count both city, county, and state money, over thirty million dollars in economic incentives were paid back to property owners. That program was so successful, by the way, that we expanded it to include, uh, areas that were developed over fifty years ago, primarily, uh, anything really south of 27th Street and east of Vine. And that brings me to the second point. I love downtown, and it's really important, it's where my family started their business. But we have two other shopping districts. We have the Vine Street Corridor and we have North Vine. And we need to think that as a city, that we have these three districts, because we have people that own businesses all in town, and that we need to promote every district, not just downtown.
Great, thank you. And the same question now for Michael Burgess. Um, what specifically can the city commission do to continue to support downtown revitalization in Hayes?
I think specifically, uh, we can champion the downtown. Um, it does feel like maybe a monopoly's kinda been broken, um, with the sale of multiple buildings downtown now. There are, um, those are, those are the small business owners that we often talk about and kinda fantasize about what we want in Hayes. The restaurants downtown, the, the clothing stores downtown, the jewelry stores, those are all individual entrepreneurs. And so we need to work with our, um, continue to work with our partner agencies, the, the downtown Grow Hayes and the Chamber of Commerce and the CVB and all these entities to kinda continue to direct our focus on, again, championing those business owners and looking for opportunities. And I would encourage them, if there's incentives, incentives that they need for their business growth, that they approach the city. Doesn't mean that we will give them anything, um, but I think that we need to be able to say, if you got an idea and it's gonna lead to more growth and jobs and another business opportunity, then you should not be hesitant to come forward to the city and present those ideas.
Great, thank you. And lastly, Ron Melick. Um, what specifically can the city commission do to, to continue to support downtown revitalization in Hayes?
The first thing that Hayes can do is to continue, uh, help subsidizing the DHDC and Grow Hayes. Uh, both of those entities are always looking for, to recruit people for us, and that's why we support them monetarily each year. We also have the CVB. The CVB helps promote downtown, not just locally, not just area-wide, but statewide. Uh, that is the biggest, uh, advantage that the downtown has, is our CVB, uh, putting out information that they would not be able to afford to different markets. Uh, the CVB draws people, uh, here to Hayes and shuffles them downtown to see, uh, our attractions, our restaurants, uh, our history. Uh, so I would say the biggest thing that we can do is keep, uh, monetarily subsidizing, subsidizing the DHDC and also continue with, uh, our advertising program of downtown Hayes through the CVB.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, let's, uh, move on to a new question here. Ryan Reimer will be the first to respond. What sort of problems and solutions should the city be focused on, uh, for long-term water sustainability in our region?
I believe we had a recent relatively good breakthrough. Uh, we do live in a drought-prone area. Um, our water conservation program in Hayes has, is, is one of the least water-consuming households, I believe in the state, if not the, close to the nation. Uh, so, one, maintain our water conservation program. Two, um, look at other sources. I mean, I think they've done well at this point to help ensure that we at least have some security with, uh, water source here in western Kansas.
Okay, thank you. And same question here for Henry Schwaller IV. What sort of problems, what sort of solutions should the city be focused on for long-term water sustainability in our region?
The problem is that when the town was located here, there wasn't a stream with sufficient amount of water, and there are no wells underneath the city that produces with enough water for a growing city. Um, we encountered that problem in the late nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties and then embarked, as Mr. Reimer said, on a water conservation program. Ninety-two gallons per person per day, the best in the state, and we've won national wars as well. Uh, we continue through our staff to enforce and bring in new water conservation efforts, not just inside the home, but outside as well, and continue to refine those. Um, we've also looked at forty different water sources since the nineteen fifties, ones that we're not using. But we've decided to settle on a ranch that we own in Edwards County that has nearly eight thousand acre-feet of water. To put that in perspective, we use about eighteen-hundred to twenty-two-hundred acre-feet of water a year. That's more water than we need. We received the master order from the Division of Water Resources to pump that water here. We're now going through that process, but it's not just our water, because we don't need it. But it's not just our water, because we don't need that, all of that water. We're going to sell it in Rush County, we're going to sell it to Victoria, and we're going to sell it to Ellis, and of course, our water partner is Russell. Everything we do, we coordinate with Russell. Their water needs are just as serious as ours. So moving forward, I'm going to continue doing what we've done, and that's what we've invested in.
Thank you. And now the same question for Michael Burgess. What sort of problems, what sort of solutions should the city be focused on for long-term water sustainability in our region?
First, the solution is what we're currently doing, is maintaining our conservation of water and being very cognizant that water is a precious resource, not just for Hays, but for western Kansas. So we have to make sure we maintain those levels of conservation as a good neighbor for the state. It's going to be, as the R9 Ranch is in the process of coming up here, that's certainly a great source, and that is tied to 100% economics. So we're going to have to show that we're good stewards of that water, that we're using it appropriately, and again, moving it towards Russell and Victoria and those. We also, in some ways, have to get over the stigma that Hays does not have any water. There are abundant sources of water that we can look into. Henry's already kind of iterated. There are other well services, the Dakota Aquifer is available. It does take more, not refining, you know, refined water, but, think of the word, but to prepare that water for service, and so that's why we haven't really looked into the Dakota. There is the Trigo 1 and 2 that bypasses Hays and goes to Victoria. There's sources of water there. We can look into our current wells and see if they need to be modernized and updated so that way they are truly efficient. It is projected that 10% to 15% of water loss is through old pipes and leakage. Now, I think Hays does better than that 10% or 15% leakage problem, but there are certainly opportunities in 80-year-old pipes to make sure we're doing everything we can to conserve our water.
Thank you. And now the same question for Ron Melick. What sort of problems and what sort of solutions should the city be focused on for long-term water sustainability in our region?
We've been working on that for years. All of our conservation practices help us make a case to the state that we would like to have the Water Transfer Act enacted so that we can bring that water up to Hays. We've rehabilitated our wells. We're just getting ready to rehabilitate a few more. We've been fortunate with the rain, but we're not out there touting everything that we do for water conservation. But among our peers, and really anybody in the state, we have the best conservation rate of anyone, and so we just need to keep continuing to push to get the change of use from agricultural to municipal at our R9 Ranch, and then we can start on the Water Transfer Act. And with the case that we've been building for 20 years, every little thing for checking for leaks, conservation measures, rehabilitations, we should be able to get that water to Hays.
Thank you. And finally, for Mason Ruder, the same question. What sort of problems and what sort of solutions should the city be focused on for long-term water sustainability in our region?
The city of Hays Water Department does a great job, especially when it comes to education, for kids of all ages. I know I've been a part of some of these projects, using water models, showing them how they can conserve water. It all starts at home when it comes to conservation. The infrastructure, the old pipes and whatnot, needs to be continued, or needs to continue to be looked at. The R9 Ranch started back when I was, I think, in kindergarten, so I'm hoping we're nearing the end of this project. It's, a lot has changed in the last 20-odd years of water and technology. We can continue to look, I think, in the future for, maybe there is some Dakota water around with some desalination plants. Maybe that could be a financially smart option to look for in the future, even if it is just research. Maybe there is some additional sources we can look for, as long as we are continuing to keep up on our infrastructure to maintain all this water that we take in.
Okay, thank you very much. And now I have one more question here before closing statements, and Henry Schwalder IV, you'll be the first to respond. This is a very short question. I want you to grade the city on recycling. And because I'm a professor, I'm going to ask for a grade, A, B, C, D, or F. How well has the city incentivized recycling and brought about recycling programs for residents?
Yeah, A+. I can't think of any other city, even in today's era, that has been so successful recycling. We won an award for it 25 years ago, and the problem is that the markets have certainly changed in 25 years, but we're still, in terms of glass and paper and metal. We do an outstanding job. Over 80% of households recycle, and so I think we've done quite well.
Okay, thank you. And the same question for Michael Burgess. Grade the city on its recycling efforts.
I'd probably go a B. There is certainly some very nice things. We recycle at our, we've got the blue bag, so we put our paper in one, and we put our bottles and glass and everything else. It is a very convenient service for us. We do take it seriously to recycle. So from that standpoint, from the convenience of being a customer of recycling, I think it's there. I'd give it a B because I feel like there's probably some greater opportunities of stepping up, stepping up the game. What those are, I couldn't tell you, but that's kind of where I am. I see it from a customer standpoint, the ease is there, but there's probably other opportunities.
Okay, thank you. And the same question for Ron Melick. Grade the city on its recycling efforts.
I think our recycling efforts are A+. Not only are we providing that service for a very minimal amount to each resident, but we also have that open to businesses. We have, Fort Hays State is a good one that brings us their recyclables. We recycle cardboards for a lot of businesses that get large products in their, to have recycled. But the key thing, it's not what the city's doing, it's what the individual people in Hays are doing. They're wanting to do the right thing for not only Hays, but our planet. And like Henry said, the prices of our recycling that we can get is going down. Some places are doing away with their recycling, but we are keeping our recycling going, and for, you know, we may end up having to subsidize that to a certain point, but I would give Hays an A+, and the residents an A+, and most businesses an A for recycling.
Okay, thank you. And the same question for Mason Ruder. Grade the city on its recycling efforts.
I'm going to be overly critical and go with a B, just because I can, I always appreciate that there's always room for opportunity. It's not that they're doing anything wrong now, it's just there's, there could be potential for some greater opportunity for recycling. I know the city of Hays residents do a fantastic job with recycling. I know with the county, we run the hazardous waste program, Free to Citizens, and we get people every single day coming and wanting to recycle anything they can. They really go out of their way to make sure that they're doing it and doing it right. So the city does a great job with recycling. I'm just overly critical, saying that we can always do better at everything we do.
Okay, thank you. And finally, for Ryan Reimer, the same question. Grade the city on its recycling efforts.
When I first moved here, I was really impressed. I'd seen recycling done in other towns. Wichita wasn't really proactive in it, and so when I came here, I was really amazed. That's one of the things that made us an all-American city. I think it was maybe a challenge for people who've never done such a thing before to really catch on, but now my children, who have grown up nothing else, knowing nothing else, that recycling is what you do. I'm going to say we're getting an A-, because I think, like a couple of other gentlemen here, more could be done. Traveling about, I've seen other towns throughout the world that have public recycling facilities. So like, let's say in an apartment complex, you might have a four-sided dumpster that has even different colored glasses, plastics, paper, to where you can just pop it in the bin. Not everybody has the advantage of being able to wheel their trash and recyclables out, and I think we could better accommodate those and also continue with our education on recycling in the city to make sure it sustains well into the future.
Great, thank you very much. And now we've gone around twice, and we're going to begin with Michael Burgess for closing statements here. You have two minutes for closing statements.
Thank you to the different committees that put on this forum this evening. Thank you to the other candidates for being involved, and those here in the crowd that are here to listen, those at home. Thanks to my supporters that have encouraged me to run. In some ways, it's kind of surprising to me that we have a community of 20-some thousand, and there's only five of us up here, and only three of us are essentially stepping out and saying. And I know it's an uncomfortable position to kind of run for public office, but that's why I thank these commissioners, or these gentlemen, for running for commission and being part of the forum. I hope the answers I kind of gave tonight, again, give some clarification on where I stand on different issues. Please reach out to me. There's different ways to do so. There's the Facebook page, Vote Burgess Hays. VoteBurgessHays.info is my website. I've been putting articles there. I'm encouraged by all five of four of these, where the city's going, and just stay engaged over the next couple of weeks leading into the election. Talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, and again, I appreciate your vote, but certainly vote for who you think will move our city forward in the way you want to see it go.
Thank you very much. And closing statement from Ron Melick.
I thank all of the entities that work together to put this forum on for the citizens of Hays, because that's who it's for. I served on the commission from 2007 to 2015, and I did not seek reelection at that time because I believe in term limits, and term limits for all political offices. We have a great community here. We have a regional hospital, Fort Hays State University, Jet Service to two major hubs, and many, many quality-of-life amenities in our town. As far as the city, city government is operating on a balanced budget with the same mill levy as they did in 2007. We are paying cash for all of our projects. We are no longer bonding them and paying those interest rates for 20 to 30 years. With all of these things as a foundation, we can continue to strive to recruit and attract new businesses and high-paying jobs in order to grow Hays. If elected, I will work hard to achieve these goals, along with working to get our Water Transfer Act passed, giving Hays and the region a viable and sustainable long-term water source. I believe that if we can secure this water source, that it will be a huge economic development driver, not only for Hays, but the surrounding area for years to come. Thank you, and I would appreciate your vote on November 5th.
Okay, thank you. And closing statement from Mason Ruder.
I wanted to thank everybody that's come out this evening, or that's watching at home, or will be watching in the future on YouTube, doing some research, making sure they're making the best decision for them and their community, and thanks to everybody who's put this on. It's, this is why I love this community so much, is we get to be out in front of everybody and chat with you. I mean, this is why we're here in the first place. We heard quite a few ideas on what we can do to better serve and prepare the city that we all love so much for the future. I know it's going to take more than the five of us up here, or the five commissioners, whoever that may be, in 2020 to get some of this work done. Now's the time, we need to come together as a community, really start digging in our heels, and put some of our ideas to the test. With your support, we can finally get some things done, so I'd appreciate your vote on November 5th, and I think it's time to go, Hays, and let's get some work done.
Okay, thank you. And now closing statement from Ryan Reimer.
It is certainly an honor to be here tonight as a candidate for one of the finest cities that I've ever seen. As commissioner, I would like to make Hays the crown jewel of western Kansas. We have a lot of opportunities, a lot of great minds that can help us do that, and we can't make it happen if we don't listen to them, if we don't put forth efforts to get to know them. As commissioner, I vow to continue to strive to make Hays the best place in Kansas to live, hands down. When I became an ER manager in Russell, Kansas, I vowed to make it the best critical access hospital in the region, and it is. And I will do the same for this city. I believe my experience as a leader, my commitment to those who I have served in the past, and to those who I will serve in the future, lends me well to this opportunity. I would greatly appreciate your support so that I can continue my endeavors to make Hays the crown jewel of western Kansas. Thank you.
And thank you. Finally, Henry Schwalder IV, closing statements.
Our sponsors for having us here tonight, thank you. You've done an excellent job, and thank you to everyone who's interested in city government, because without you, we couldn't get things done. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you. One of the rules I learned growing up here was a Boy Scout campsite rule. Leave it better than you found it. I think the city's doing much better now than it was when I started. We still have a long ways to go. There are three rules I follow when I make any decision. Number one, be careful with the money. Make adequate but austere investment in all the city's services. Don't spend more than you have, and that's served us well. Second, make independent, informed decisions. Show up to the commission meetings ready, informed, and talk to as many people as possible. Don't be afraid to vote against the majority. Sometimes you need to say what you need to say and move on. Third, listen and focus on you, the residents of Hays. That's my greatest source of information. I'm running because I care about Hays, and as I see you in Dylan's and Walmart and go door-to-door, I know that you care about Hays too. Let's work together and continue to make great things happen here in Hays, America. Thank you.
And thank you. Just to repeat the candidates' names from right to left, we have Michael Burgess, Ron Melick, Mason Ruder, Ryan Reimer, Henry Schwalder IV. I'm Professor Jay Steinmanz, and this is Professor Wendy Rollator-Sook. Thank you all for coming out here. Register to vote, and vote, and have a good night.